... two on our agenda this evening, or sorry, item three, which is a presentation of the colors by the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Honor Guard. Invite you to please stand. You can be seated. Item five on our agenda this evening is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so on agenda items appearing before us this evening, which they'll be invited to the podium after being acknowledged by a city council member, which would be allowed to speak for no longer than five minutes. Item six is the administration of police department ceremonial oaths of office and badge pinning. Invite the chief to the frontier, and it sounds like we're going to do them in two batches. So we'll do item six and then follow with the fire department in a similar fashion.
All right. Like to call forward Deputy Chief Frank Kraskowski, Lieutenant Scott Dewitt, Sergeant Jordan Lubeck, Officer Alex Mars, and Officer Jacob McCodlow.
Okay, Brian. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brian Kraskowski.
Hi, Brian Kraskowski.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as deputy chief.
To serve as deputy chief.
Of the police department.
Of the police department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Scott Dewitt.
I, Scott Dewitt.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as lieutenant.
To serve as lieutenant.
Of the police department.
Of the police department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Jordan Lubeck.
I, Jordan Lubeck.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as sergeant.
To serve as sergeant.
Of the police department.
Of the police department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. I, Alex Mars.
I, Alex Mars.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as an officer.
To serve as an officer.
At the police department.
At the police department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jennifer McCodlow.
I, Jennifer McCodlow.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as an officer.
To serve as an officer.
At the police department.
At the police department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Can I please call up the loved ones who are going to be pinning the badges?
Congratulations to all of those promotions and to the new officers. Welcome and be safe out there. I just want to note that outgoing Deputy Chief Randy Johns was unable to be here tonight as for our customary acknowledgement of those that are retiring from the city. So we'll move on to item number seven, which is the administration of fire department ceremonial oaths of office and badge pinning. Chief, you want to come forward?
I'm Officer Captain Joe Kubis. I'm Officer Roger Erdman. And firefighter Officer Edman.
Joe, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joe Kubis.
I, Joe Kubis.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as fire captain.
To serve as fire captain.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Roger Erdman.
I, Roger Erdman.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as motor pump operator.
To serve as motor pump operator.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Austin Erdman.
I, Austin Erdman.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as a firefighter.
To serve as a firefighter.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Individuals clear the badge. Badges if you can forward.
Again, congratulations on the promotions and to our new firefighter. Welcome to the city and as always, be safe out there and thanks for keeping us safe. Item number eight on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. All the persons, it's attachment number one in your packets. What are your wishes regarding the minutes of the previous meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Zerflu. Is there a second? We had a motion by Zerflu. All right, we'll give the motion to Katna and a second to Blazer. We'll move with the system here. Maybe I got us out of step here, I'm sorry. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Motion carries. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item number nine is my report. Good evening, council members, staff, and those here watching from home. The big news since my last report was the announcement by Matalco on their selection of Wisconsin Rapids for their aluminum plant, which is expected to be an $80 million investment, creating 80 full-time jobs here in the city once they're at full capacity. As we all know, this is welcome news on many fronts as it's been the city's interest to diversify our economic base and capitalizes on our proactive approach set in motion with the certified sites' participation that the city sought in 2014. All development details will be formally presented to the city at a special meeting in March where the land sale and incentives will be finalized as well as all the project specifics. The mayor's youth council has narrowed down their project selection to two projects for the remaining portion of the year. Bicycle Benefits Program and a Teen Movie Night. The Bicycle Benefits Program is a program that will involve participation from area businesses now that first will identify bicycle parking that exists or doesn't exist at businesses and will offer special coupons or discounts to those bike riders with a designated sticker on their helmet. Teen Movie Night is, it's held its initial planning meeting last week and is in early stages of their development. In short, it's a night dedicated to teens only, giving our young adults something fun and our youth something fun to do in our community that is just for them. And look for future updates as these projects move along. Welcome Harrison from the youth council as well as a student observer from Lincoln High School as he'll be sharing updates on these fronts, I'm sure, in the future. The Beautification Council continues their work with the Cultural Center on the project of bringing public art to our parks. This month referrals went in front of the Parks and Rec Committee Commission to continue their previous efforts from 2014 and begin preparing the spaces potentially where art can be displayed. Members of the group have also worked on keeping our Bird City status with the resolution that is also before you tonight. In addition to the parks mentioned just there, wayfinding and park signage has been discussed at various levels within staff and with the public for some time and more recently at the staff level and other community partners. It's been discussed to bring this item to the committee in March should it warrant committee discussion even at a familiar or at a preliminary level to bring everyone up to speed as to what that project seeks to address. An update from the airport from our, you've got your full report in your packet tonight, but they're planning, important to note for the public's benefit is that we're planning a drone seminar April 13th for enthusiasts and drone interested individuals in conjunction with the EAA. We actually are bringing EAA folks from Oshkosh to the community to offer this free seminar. There might be a small stipend required to cover some of the basic expenses with the event, but at this point, we're planning for the 13th of April at the airport. Part two of that would actually involve folks, the opportunity to fly their drones at the airport, so watch for more information on that to come. The library continues to refine its plans for the adult services space. Community meetings have been held over the last two months with a final one on March 13th. The ideas including, include relocating portions of the Maker space, which if you have not been there, it's tucked into probably the hardest to find corner of the library, but it is a must-see. 3D printers, a podcast recording studio, a green screen, among many other really neat forward-looking tools are available for residents and businesses to use as well as introducing a new concept that is more commonly found in larger cities, co-working spaces. These would be community spaces to be used for a variety of purposes by those who don't work from a traditional office or for those who want a space to collaborate in with others. In the category of attended, hosted, or participated, hosted two Coffee with the Mayor events. It's a lot easier to do those in the wintertime as folks are more interested in warming up around a cup of coffee to talk about city issues, both from the ground up as well as the Lowell Center. Participated in a panel with the, with other local government leaders on, with the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Leadership class with representatives from both the county as well as the state. We obviously hosted our Matalco announcement here a couple of weeks ago. Continued to hold interviews for the GIS specialist and just this week started interviews with the multimedia coordinator. In ribbon cuttings, we held a ribbon cutting at the Aspirus family birthplace, a portion of their 20, of Aspirus's $20 million investment made in their first phase. We also, at that event, speaking alongside myself was the CEO of Myron who expressed great interest and appreciation for the many community projects that are happening and planned within the city. February proclamations issued, one for United Way, 211 Day. If individuals are not familiar with the resource of 211, be sure to check it out. It's a great resource that I believe is well underutilized in our city and I think more folks should become aware of what that is. You can get information on the United Way's website or call 211. In the area board commissions appointments, as always invite residents to register their interest by filling out interest within the city clerk's office for various board and commission appointments. On the area pool project, we continue to meet with potential donors to seek a match for the $2.5 million that was offered as well as additional funding that we need to officially get the project to goal. The gift was extended to March 31st to provide the city more time to meet with donors and flesh out project specifics that other donors have sought information on. Downtown housing, the senior project, that housing project that'll be located near the Centrelia Center now with the federal government back open, just this week, they finally turned around documents to execute on that project and we were expecting groundbreaking to occur sooner than now, but now with the delays potentially out of the way, they can proceed with that project. As we've all seen, the mall demolition is complete for the YMCA Boys and Girls Club VA project. The Boys and Girls Club space, if you haven't noticed, got some windows in the last week and with the YMCA, the steel is starting to take shape adjacent to the current VA clinic. And that concludes my report. I'll be at the League of Municipalities Lobby Day in Madison tomorrow, so my radio show has been pre-recorded. So if anyone wants to call in, you'll have to call me directly to speak about issues, but you can catch my recording of the radio show tomorrow at 10:00 AM on WFHR. Item 10, under new business, consider a resolution declaring June 1st, 2019 and September 8th, 2019 international migratory bird days for the city of Wisconsin Rapids, which is attachment number two. As mentioned, this was previously considered and adopted by the common council and we bring it back forward to you. I see Mary Doms here in the audience if there are questions. Otherwise, I believe it's the same as with previous years, right, Mary? Okay, great. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to accept.
A motion by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you for that. Item 11 is consider for adoption the actions of the planning commission at its meeting on February 11th, 2019. Mary, I should also thank you for coming. I'm sorry I didn't do that before I, and thanks for your efforts. The planning commission met at 5:00 PM, 5:00 PM on February 11th, 2019 in the first floor conference room here at City Hall. Members present included myself, Tom Brey, Daniel Hanson, Lee Tao, Sue Wesley. Members absent were Shane Burkhart and Alder Person Kubaschak, who had a conflict with work, I believe. Staff members included Joe Terry and members of the public included Joel Berry representing Guzlo Plumbing and Heating and Penny Pilot. Meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. The approval, item one is approval of the report from the January 7th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion, a second to approve that report and that motion carried unanimously. Item two, maps and plaits received. There were no maps or plaits received. Item three was a public hearing on Plan 181086. Mark Guzlo, the applicant, is requesting a rezoning from the R2 Mix Residential District to the B2 General Commercial District. The subject property was located at, is located at 2027th Street South. Public hearing was called to order at 5:04 PM. Speaking in favor was Joel Berry. Speaking neutrally was Penny Pilot and speaking against was nobody present for that. The public hearing was closed at 5:15 PM. Item four was action on Plan 181086. There was a motion and a second to approve the plan to rezone from R2 to B2 conditionally upon the existing gravel area being removed or paved within 36 months or redevelopment of the lot, whichever comes first, and the existing inventory on the lot shall be located on private property a minimum of five feet from any property line. Nothing is to be stored within the right-of-way and that motion carried unanimously. Item five is adjournment. There was a motion, a second to adjourn. Motion carried with the meeting adjourned at 5:23 PM. Alder Persons, what are your wishes regarding that report? Motion by Kubaschak and is there a second? And a second to approve by Blazer. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carries. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 12 is the adoption of the actions of the standing committees of the council as follows. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting. Alder Persons, Zerflu, I'll go to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are two, two reports. Finance and Property Committee met at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, January 29th in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present along with Alder Persons Graff, Kubaschak, Ray Om, Joe Terry, Krista Kuhn, and Mayor Vruwink. Item number two, update on Aquatic Recreation Center. Mayor Vruwink gave an update on the project fundraising and schedule. No action was taken. Item number three was adjournment. Meeting adjourned at 7:00 PM and I'll make a motion to approve that report.
Motion to approve by Zerflu. Can you able to, for the record, he made a motion to approve, Zerflu? All right, and if we could go for a, call for a second on that? Second by Blazer. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carries. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Go to 12B. Alder Persons, Zerflu.
This one's a little longer. The Finance Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, February 5th, 2019 in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Alder Person, Blazer was excused. He had Alder Person Graff sit in for him. A list of others on attendance is on final clerk's office. Item number two, review and consider for approval a contract not to exceed $12,000 from OMNI Resources Incorporated to conduct an IT environment assessment and assist in determining information technology priorities. There was a motion and a second to table the item until March 2019. That motion carried unanimously. Item number three, review and consider for approval for additional services from Tyler Technologies to address conversion of project ledger strings, end-user training, and Tyler IT Management Services. There was a motion and a second to approve the additional services from Tyler Technologies in the amount of $17,531. That motion carried unanimously. Item number four, review and consider for approval a proposal for the East Side Assessor Plat Number 62 for the block lying between Spring Street and Cherry Street, lying between Riverview Drive and Smith Street, also the lots adjacent to the easterly right-of-way of Smith Street between Cherry Street and Spring Street. There was a motion and a second to approve the bid from Badgerland Survey LLC in the amount of $3,200 for the East Side Assessor's Plat Number 62. That motion carried unanimously. Item number five, review and consider for approval a request from We Energies to relocate gas regulator equipment from Veterans and Mead Rapids View Parks to a location along Baker Street adjoining Gainer Park and Wood County property. There was a motion and a second to approve the request from We Energies to relocate the gas regulator equipment from Veterans and Mead Rapids View Parks to a location along Baker Street adjoining Gainer Park and the Wood County property with any cost to the city being included in the East River Bank Phase Two bid. That motion carried with Alder Person Katna voting in the negative. Item number six, consider for approval a taxi cab operator license application for Gotta Go Taxi Limited Liability Company doing business as Gotta Go Taxi, Randy Wyans applicant. There was a motion and a second to approve the taxi cab operator license for Gotta Go Taxi LLC doing business as Gotta Go Taxi, Randy Wyans applicant. That motion carried unanimously. Item number seven, consider for approval a Class B liquor license application and a Class B beer license application for Aaron's Wines &amp; Steins LLC, Aaron Jennings Agent doing business as Aaron's Wines &amp; Steins for the premises located at 160 First Street North. There was a motion and a second to approve the Class B liquor and Class B beer license application for Aaron's Wines &amp; Steins. That motion carried unanimously. Item number eight, review and consider for approval an application for a temporary Class B retailer's license from the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce Incorporated for business after-hours event to be held on February 11th, 2019 at the Arbor Creek Assisted Living located at 1410 Two Mile Avenue, Wisconsin Rapids. There was a motion and a second to approve the temporary Class B retailer's license as presented. That motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, audit of the bills. There was a motion and a second to approve check numbers 75301 through 75653 and manual checks 66000 to 66015. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 10, beverage operators licenses. There was a motion and a second to approve the beverage operators licenses as present, as presented. the beverage operators licenses as presented, and they are on file in the clerk's office, that motion carried unanimously. Item number 11, set next meeting date, the next meeting of the Finance Property Committee will be Tuesday, March 5th, at 5:00 PM. Item number 12 was adjournment, there was a motion and a second to adjourn, that motion carried unanimously, the meeting adjourned at 5:45 PM, and I'll make a motion to approve
Can you, are you able to click the motion when he makes it? We've got a motion to approve by Zurflu, is there a second? Second by Blazer, move into discussion. Alder Person Katnau, you're first.
I would like to withhold item five from the Finance and Property Committee on February 5th.
Got to request to hold out, hold out item five? So we'll just get an agenda item up here. I'll call for unanimous consent, is there any objection to holding out item number five? No objection, well, item, item five will be withheld, so that'll leave the balance of the report. And are you ready for, okay. All right, any further discussion on the balance of the report, with exception of item five? Seeing none, the motion is to approve the report with the exception of item number five. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Alder Person Katnau, I'll go to you, since you requested to withhold that item.
Thank you. So my issue with item number five is the motion that was created was to pull any funding that the city may need to put towards this from the East River Bank Phase II allotted funds. My problem with that is, we don't know what that would be. It's kind of just an unknown thrown out there that if we do have to put any money, we're going to pull it from there. And the discussion we had at the committee meeting was that, once this is out there and this goes through, it's not coming back. So if any funds were out there, and my problem with that is, I would like to see We Energies, since they're the ones making the move to Baker Street, pay for any of those costs. I don't want to see the city have to foot any of those. There's a lot of benefit to them, which we heard at that meeting, and I especially hate to see it come out of that specific project. So that's why I would like to see this go back to committee and us reword, or take another look at what we want to do with their specific requests.
I'm going to do a point of clarification, if I may. You didn't make any formal motions, so I'm just going to do a quick point of clarification, if I may, because I had an understanding, and then the way the discussion and the minutes were reflected was in contra, in conflict maybe with what staff and I had as an understanding. So I think we should just, for everybody's benefit, clarify what We Energies intentions were and any sort of potential obligations. So I'm not sure, Joe, or probably Adam, I'm thinking you were the staff member that was leading that discussion with, between the county and us and We Energies. Would you clarify the question of whether or not there is any expected liability, financial liability, to the city?
Yeah, obviously, it's relatively preliminary, but the understanding and what staff had presented to We Energies would be, that the cost would be 100% on them, and basically all that we were asking for, for finance, was the ability to utilize a portion of city property, that being Gainer Park for the relocation. And it was staff's understanding that that was acceptable to We Energies. There was one discussion item around a potential small relocation of a sewer line that exists in that park, but again, in the communications between staff and We Energies, it was noted that we were expecting them, if that was a cost of the project, that they would pick that up as well. So again, the way staff wanted it presented was that, basically utilizing the property, but at We Energies' expense. So there would not, at least, again, our proposal was that there would not be any expenditures from the city at all, much less anything out of the River Bank project.
Thank you, Alder Persons, Zurflu, you're next.
Thank you, Adam. Your Honor, I'd make a motion to approve the We Energies project contingent upon no cost to the city.
Motion to approve the relocation and related equipment from Veterans to Mead Rapids View Parks to a location that was discussed at the meeting, which is along Baker Street adjoining Gainer and Wood County property. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
At no cost to the city, if I didn't say that, I'm sorry. Alder Person Katnau's got a second, could just get the button on that, please. Thank you, move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Graff, you're first.
I just want to be clear about the reason I made that motion in the past. It was my understanding, Mr. Terry, and you can correct me, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just want to ask the question to make sure everybody understands, if we did run into a sewer lateral, that would be the city's expense. Is that correct?
So there is a potential for an existing sanitary sewer lateral to be in the way for where We Energies wants to place this facility. The staff's recommendation was, as Adam said, that if that lateral needs to be and can be relocated, that it will be relocated at the expense of We Energies. One of the reasons for that also is that a lateral doesn't belong to the city, it belongs to the property owner. And so, just, just to be consistent with, you know, the city can do work on their behalf to tie it back in, but our recommendation was to have We Energies cover those costs. There could be costs, though, and that would be, as far as we know, that would be the only city-type item that might need to be relocated.
Maybe you can elaborate a little bit more on the cost. What do you mean cost? The cost to the city, or cost to We Energies, unexpected cost to the city, is what I want to make sure we discuss.
Right, so the, if there's a cost, the cost would be to relocate, to physically relocate that sanitary sewer lateral, so that it's outside of the construction zone for We Energies. And, and what was proposed to We Energies and the discussions that, that city staff, city engineering department had with We Energies, is that if that were necessary, and there has to be some investigation, if the site is acceptable, then the wastewater utility would examine the location of that lateral and determine, you know, where it's at, and if it's in the way or not. And if it is in the way, there'd be a cost. The city would perform the relocation of that lateral, and then charge We Energies accordingly for it, and, and that would all be, you know, drawn up in a project agreement. That, that was the intent.
And I guess that's the reason I made the motion, is I wanted to make sure that there was no cost to the, underlying cost that the city would incur from doing this work, whether We Energies wanted it, or somebody in the city wanted it, or whatever, we just want to make sure that this isn't going to cost extra money to the city. So I guess that's why I made the motion, to make sure that not only was the cost covered, if it did cost the city money, but that it had as funding source as well.
And for clarification, the motion was at no cost to the city, to pursue as was presented at no cost to the city, just so everyone's aware. Alder Person Blazer, we'll go to you next.
Just quickly, was We Energies in favor of this in your discussions?
This was a request from We Energies to the city. Yeah, and I think we saw their main capacity improvement along by the river block, all summer, most of summer last year, where they took that lane down. This is also the same connection that services the Rapids East Commerce Park, so Matalco's natural gas actually would be serviced, interestingly, from over here. So I think that's the other piece. So in the referral, some of those questions were addressed a little bit more expanded than, than just my comment now, yeah. Further requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve as presented with no cost to the city, provided there's no cost to the city. Yeah, okay.
Motion carries, eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 12C, the Public Works Committee meeting held on February 5th, Alder Person Rayom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 5th, 2019, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All committee members were present, as were Alder Persons Kellogg and Zurflu. Also in attendance were Joe Terry and Joe Weichstedt. Meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. Item two, the DPW report was reviewed. Item three, the proposals for the sanitary sewer lining contract were reviewed, was moved and seconded to approve the sewer lining project bid for Visu Sewer Incorporated with the recommendation to ask the engineering department to work with wastewater to potentially maximize our budget allotment with additional lining needs within the bid. That motion carried unanimously. Item four, review referral from Alder Person Kellogg relating to potential neighborhood cleanup program, there was no action taken. Item five, the referral list was reviewed. Item six, is moved and seconded to adjourn, motion carried unanimously, the meeting adjourned at 7:15 PM, and with that, Your Honor, move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion to approve by Rayom, is there a second? And a second by Kubaschak? And we'll move into discussion, are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carries, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 12D is the Human Resources Committee meeting held on February 1st, 2019, I'll go to Alder Person Coth.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met at 1:00 PM on Friday, February 1st, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were in attendance, record of those also in attendance is on file with the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 1:04 PM. Item two was discussion and consider approval for the revised requesting personnel policy. This is a follow-up to the January 15th, 2019 council meeting, wherein the council requested that the following language be added to the policy. If the requisition and replacement process is not timely proceeding, the filling of the position will be addressed on the next HR agenda. There was a brief follow-up discussion, a motion was made by Alder Person Zurflu to accept the revised requesting personnel policy as presented. Motion was seconded by Alder Person Kellogg, motion carried. Item three was update regarding contracting with a third-party consultant to provide a culture assessment. This is a follow-up from Alder Person Graff's referral for an employee survey, no action requested. Dawn Urban indicated that there have been preliminary discussions with a third-party consultant, and it is anticipated the committee will have a proposal to review at the March council meeting, no action was taken. Item number four, discussion regarding the city's current retirement policy as it relates to create an incentive for employees to provide advance notice of their retirement date. This was a referral from Chairperson Coth. There was this discussion around the city's employees not providing timely notice of their retirement dates. Dawn Urban stated that when HR is not provided with adequate notice of retirement date, it creates a very short recruiting window to select and hire replacement. This may also lead to shortages in staffing and incurred overtime that could otherwise be avoided. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth for the HR director to provide options to modify the current policy in an effort to create an incentive for employees to provide adequate advanced notice of retirement dates. Motion was seconded by Alder Person Zurflu, motion carried. Item five, discussion regarding the current IT director position, referral from Chairperson Coth. There was a discussion around the IT director position and some of the recruiting challenges. A motion was made by Alder Person Kellogg to create a lead IT position and have the HR director provide the committee with a job description and compensation. Motion was seconded by Alder Person Zurflu, motion carried with Chairperson Coth voting in the negative. Item six, discussion regarding an item on the, placing an item on the HR agenda each month, which would be an update on current staffing and vacancies. This is a request from Alder Person Blazer. Dawn Urban listed the following open positions. IT Director, GIS Coordinator, IT Intern, Multimedia Coordinator, Senior City Inspector, Entry Level Firefighter, Street Supervisor, and Loader Operator. All of, all of the city positions can be found on the city website, which is www.rapids.org/jobopportunities.html. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth to add the city's job openings as a standing HR agenda item, motion was seconded by Alder Person Zurflu, motion carried. Item seven, discussion regarding the city's current merit pay provision and section of the pay provisions policy. This is a referral from Chairperson Coth. There was a discussion around modifying this policy to make criteria for merit pay more clear. It was acknowledged that it's very difficult to, to make the current policy fair and consistent since the circumstances may be different in each situation. Chairperson Coth made a motion to modify the existing merit pay provisions as follows. When a department head position becomes vacant, and the HR committee believes that in interim, department head appointment is necessary, the scope, job expectations, additional compensation, if any, and primary added responsibilities shall be addressed with the employee who will fill in for the department head and approved by the HR committee and council. When the temporary assignment ends, a new, and a new department head is hired, the HR committee will then approve the additional compensation to be paid to the interim employee provided performance expectations have been met. The employee will be awarded additional pay not to exceed $50 a week for the number of weeks that he or she filled in during the vacancy, unless another amount was determined at the time the interim was appointment, appointed. The award of merit pay shall be at the discretion of the HR committee and the council. Motion was seconded by Alder Person Zurflu, and motion carried, like the point that I did not see who made the motion on this. Oh, Chairperson Coth made the motion, was seconded by Alder Person Zurflu, motion carried. Item eight, discussion regarding group, short-term and long-term disability policy for city employees. This was a person from, referral from Chairperson Coth. There was a discussion around various types of group disability policies. It was stated that the city currently does not have budgeted funds for disability insurance. Dawn Urban indicated that the city was, has the ability to request quotes for group voluntary disability insurance. This means employees would need to choose if they wanted to select coverage and pay their premiums in full. Dawn Urban also stated that it is likely the disability carrier would require that employees first exhaust all available paid time options prior to the disability insurance providing pay to employees. Chairperson Coth made a motion to solicit and review quotes for voluntary disability insurance for a July 1 effective date. Motion was seconded by Alder Person Kellogg, the motion carried. Item nine was to discuss and consider for approval of a proposed ordinance changing the 15-mile residency requirement for city emergency personnel to 30 miles. This is a referral from Alder Person Blazer from the last council meeting. A brief discussion occurred, and Alder Person Zurflu made a motion to change the ordinance for emergency personnel to 30 miles. Motion was seconded by Chairperson Coth, the motion carried. In open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85 Para 1, Para E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. A motion was made by Alder Person Zurflu and seconded by Alder Person Kellogg to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken, all members voted in the affirmative, motion carried. In closed session, the committee discussed ongoing negotiations and parameters regarding successor labor agreements with IAAF 4215 and WR PPA. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth to return to open session, motion was seconded by Alder Person Kellogg, roll call vote was taken, and the motion carried. Item 11 was to discuss and consider approval of a side letter agreement with the WR PPA regarding detective work schedule. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth to amend the side letter agreement to make it clear that the work schedule will sunset at the time the labor agreement is approved, unless specifically negotiated into the successor labor agreement. Motion was seconded by Alder Person Zurflu, motion carried. Motion carried. Item number 12 was discussion regarding requesting premium rates from Aspiris Arise for plans which may have different deductibles or which may contain other health plan designs. A motion was made by Chairperson Couth to request premium rates from Aspiris Arise for plans which may have different deductibles or contain other plan design changes. Motion was seconded by Alderperson Kellogg. The motion carried. Next item was to set the next meeting date. The next meeting is set for March 8th, 2019 at 1 PM in the first floor conference room of City Hall. Next item was adjournment. The meeting was adjourned by Chairperson Couth at 3:10 PM. And with that, I would look for adoption of the minutes withholding item number five.
A motion by Couth to approve the Human Resources Committee report from February 1st with the exception of item five. So we've got a second from Kellogg, and we'll move into discussion. Alderperson Raum, did you have an item to speak on?
Yes, Your Honor, I would, I guess, hold out item number nine.
We have a request to hold out item number nine and a call for unanimous consent. Is there any objection? No objection to holding out item number nine as well? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to approve the report with the exception of five and nine. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
We'll go to item number five, Alderperson Couth, to your request to hold that out.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, we've talked about this position a couple times. We approved it last summer, and then we wanted to change it. And I've heard commentary both ways on this position of why we need it and why we don't need it. I've kind of listened to a lot of things on this, and I think we needed it as a director position. First off, I want to express how difficult it is for our Human Resources Director to attempt to fill a position when we constantly change it. It's been brought to my attention that other people who are looking for employment with the city watch our committee meetings, and they watch our council meetings, and they have second thoughts on taking a job with the city when we constantly modify the position. Under the IT Director position that we had presented with the pay range that we had presented for it, we had a candidate that was willing to take the job and perform the duties at that pay, but when they saw that we wanted to change it, they withdrew from accepting the job with us. I can't say that I would blame them because if I'm going to go apply for a job myself somewhere, if they tell me that my job duties are going to be a certain number of things with a certain pay, and then they add something to it for the same pay, probably won't take it. Or if they leave the same duties with less pay, I probably won't take it. I remember a couple years ago when this council decided to hire Mr. Joe Terry as the Director of Public Works. Joe has done a great job as Director of Public Works. He manages numerous different departments or works with different departments and oversees them. Engineering, streets, works with the airport, a lot of different things. He is the one guy that brings these things together and utilizes the resources. I think an IT Director is kind of what we need. I don't think putting boots on the ground or filling up our IT department with people without a person that has the knowledge and the capability to guide them is going to benefit the city or do us any good. I know another argument on this position has been, what do we pay it? And has it was with the pay that was proposed for it? It was comparatively put that we pay our wastewater treatment operator or the fellow that manages the plant, we pay him less than we're paying this position. I don't know how to say it, other than that's kind of the nature of the beast with some of our jobs this day and age. I mean, if we really want to start looking at what we pay jobs in the responsibilities that come along with them, we pay police officers $50,000 a year ballpark with the potential that they might have to get shot or take somebody's life. We pay firefighters relatively the same to run into a burning house and save people. Maybe it's not fair, but that's the nature of what it is and what those jobs get paid. Someone that's going to be an IT Director for what the private sector pays can command more than what we pay, and that's just the way it is with the market. There's not much control we have over that. So, I would like to make a motion to send this item back to committee and have it reviewed for what other municipalities are paying for the similar position, and post it as a lead and hope that we can actively recruit for it, fill for it, and get a qualified candidate.
I'll ask the Clerk, since she was feverishly writing, to make sure we have the motion understood before I call for a second. Would you mind reading the motion as you've got it to make sure before I call for a second?
The motion was to send the item back to the city to review what...
Committee.
I'm sorry, to the committee, to review what other cities pay.
And is there a second? The second is by Katna. Move into discussion. Are there any elements of the motion that we need to clarify? Just wondering, making sure everyone's understood what the motion is. Alderperson Blazer, we'll go to you first.
Well, I hope you guys join me in voting this motion down. We've discussed this at length at HR. We're going to sit, we want to pay a person a high-priced position when our IT person said he needs help. We don't need to waste money on a guy or a person to tell us how to spend money in that department. We need people that... The biggest complaint is, we don't have enough people to maintain and work on our computers. And in a city this size, we go from one IT person to... I don't know. We've had a variety of different paths here, but we heard from our current IT person, he says he needs help. We don't need somebody to sit in an office and decide workloads or decide how to spend more money for a high-valued position. And Steve did bring up Joe, and Joe's a great, great public work director. But over the years, we've had public work directors, we have not, we've had them back, we've had not, we've had bad ones, we've had good ones. That's just the nature of a position. Luckily, we've got a really great one now. So I plan to vote no. I say an IT Lee, a guy or a person that can fix the computers and help direct workload in that department is what the city needs. Thank you.
Are there any further requests? Alderperson Kubashak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to quick, I guess, repeat what Mr. Blazer said. We don't need another cook. We need people working. During the HR committee meetings that I attended, it's a case where we need computer help. We need computer help. We don't need another director telling people what to do. We need people doing the stuff. So, I'm going to vote no, and then if it fails, I'm going to make a motion to what the original number five was.
Are there further requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, I'll just offer a point of clarification. When the position, as Alderperson Couth acknowledged, when it was previously amended last summer, I don't have the exact date and timeframe off the top of my head, but we intended to make that position very much a working manager, that there... We can't afford that person to simply direct staff, and that came as a result of an experience we had with the previous individual holding that position. And I think we learned quite plainly that we needed somebody that both could operate at a director level and oversee our systems and our infrastructure, but somebody that truly could do, somebody that could maintain the infrastructure, somebody that could work alongside our help desk and support staff, lead the GIS specialist and coordinator, as well as work alongside community media, which is primarily an IT function that happens to offer communications over our IT infrastructure. And I think, I find myself sort of in a strange position in the sense that I think we're all saying the same thing. I think we all have the same interests. I don't know if we're hung up on the title of the position, and that's why we made the amendments to the job description last year. And so I guess I just, I want to state those things because I think we do want the same things. Whether we call it an IT lead or an IT director, they're going to be doing the same thing. They're still going to be leading the IT staff unless you're going to ask the mayor to be the supervisor in that department, but that's currently the structure. And, you know, I've offered a pinch-hit service to our IT staff in the interim while we haven't had our director, but I still stand by the fact that we need someone to lead the department in addition to the comments that have been made, which have been the reasons why we amended the job description most recently. So, are there any further requests to speak? Alderperson Kellogg.
I agree with the lead technician. Basically, my feeling is that they can direct that department, and when you look at the cost of a director, if we need certain advice or programs, et cetera, from the lead technician, we could farm that out to some organization in Wisconsin Rapids, Stevens Point, Wausau, and they'll have to guarantee that it'll work and it functions the way we want it, and then our technicians can take over and maintain it. So, I'm in favor of the lead technician and meeting the needs of the city right now.
Thank you. Other requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, I'll ask the Clerk to repeat the motion for the benefit of the body.
The motion was to send the item back to committee to review what other cities pay and make a recommendation.
Any further requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion failed, two ayes, six nays.
Are there requests to speak? They cleared that one out. They cleared out for the speaking order. And then I think you have to create another item. Just one second while the Clerk creates another item since that... No, 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 we've got to dispose of five yet, so just create another five. Okay, we're ready. Are there any requests? Alderperson Kubashak, or is yours?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion to... I'll make the motion with the verbatim language as item number five that was withheld.
We have a motion to approve item five as it's presented in our packets on the HR Committee. Is there a second? Sorry, one second while we get the system ready up here. Got a motion by Kubashak, second by Kellogg. Move into requests to speak. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
All right, we'll move on to 12D9, which is the discuss and consideration for approval of a proposed ordinance changing the 30-mile residency requirement for city emergency personnel to 15 miles. This is a referral from Alderperson Blazer from the last council meeting. Attachment number three, I'll go to Alderperson Raum. You asked for that one to be held out.
Thank you. Yeah, on my... I oppose it, I guess, or not, I guess. I oppose it in the sense that, to me, for emergency personnel, 30 miles away seems to be getting a little too far for me to go along with. So that's the reason I held it out, to leave it at the 15 where it's at now. So I know there's a motion in order to... Do you deny the request, or would you... A positive motion is...
I'd rather have a positive motion, but...
Okay, well, however, I... Okay, well...
Amendment, right?
I can just vote against it, then.
Right.
Yep, okay.
And as soon as we get ready here, Tom, I'll take a motion, but just a minute. Or someone else, if someone else wants to make a motion on the matter. Alderperson Raum, did you want to make the motion?
No.
Okay.
I just wanted to vote against it.
All right, fair enough. Alderperson's... We had a motion by Blazer to approve as it's presented. Is there a second? All right, we had a motion by Blazer. Is there a second? Second by Couth. We'll move on to discussion. Alderperson Zerflu.
Here we are again. I'm not opposed to the 30-mile residency, and I would just like to point out in the minutes on the agenda, it actually says changing the 30-mile requirement to 15. So just so we know what we're talking, 15 to 30 is what the referral was from the HR Emergency personnel on their time off can go anywhere. I mean, they could go down to Madison for the day or something. I don't, I kind of reject the idea that if we need to call people in, a 30-minute drive versus a 15-minute drive, you know, is going to make necessarily a huge difference. Our employees know when they're supposed to be at work, and they're expected to be at work during their scheduled hours. Restricting them unnecessarily, in my opinion, to living so close within the city, I think all it really does is affect our applicant pool. That's my opinion. And I think we've been going back and forth with this, and I think for the employees that we should probably address this issue for good at this meeting. No, so that was my, that's my two cents. I'm in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
I actually have nothing to add because I feel the same sentiments as Mr. Zerflu. The chiefs are here. I don't want to speak for them, but I'm guessing, if I recall, that it's not a concern. And any concern that there are, they're addressed in their policies. And...
The motion is to approve as it's been presented in the HR agenda and the HR minutes, not the way it's presented on the council agenda. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven ayes, one nay.
Thank you. You can put that one to bed after some time of discussion, perhaps? Oh, maybe a second reading of the ordinance change. Okay, we'll, we'll check on that. Spoke too soon. All right, item thirteen is reports of other committees, commissions, and boards and departmental reports. Item A, the Ethics Board meeting held on August 20, 2018. Item B, the Mayor's Youth Council meeting held on January 16. Item C, the McMillan Memorial Library meeting held on January 16. Item D, the Park and Rec Commission meeting held on February 11. Item E, the Police and Fire Commission meetings held on January 9 and February 13. Item F, the Wastewater Treatment Commission meeting held on February 6. And item G, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department summary report for January. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
A motion by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Blazer. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no further, seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Item fourteen, listed under referral of communications to committees, is a referral to legislative committee for consideration of an ordinance which will address conflicts and other ordinances as a, as a result of the new zoning code. Generally, it's a practice for me to call for other referrals, so I'll do that at this time. Are there any other referral of communication to committees? Seeing none, we'll move into adjournment. I take, entertain a motion to adjourn. And a motion by Zerflu, second by Kubashak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here and a good rest of your evening.